Pass along information to the City Council and discuss initiatives listed on the published agenda. My ordinance and committee consists of the Mayor, members of the City Council, and the City Administrator. The ordinance mandates the City Administrator as Chair of the Committee Meetings. This is not a pub-- this is a public meeting but not a public hearing, therefore while the meeting is open to the public, we do not take public comments or questions during the committee meetings. Public comments or questions are received at the regular City Council meetings held virtually at 7:00 PM, either virtually in the City or in the City Council chambers on the second and fourth Monday of each month. First item on today's agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Community Development and Transportation Committee Meeting for October 28th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilwoman Welles. Is there a second? Same by Councilwoman Judy. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Item number two under other items, discussion of Downtown Roswell Parking Assessment Study by Stand Tech Consulting Services. Mr. Tom Smith from the DDA is presenting.
This is Trent Perry. On behalf of the Downtown Development Authority, I want to thank Mayor Henry and council members for the opportunity of presenting this study to you this morning. We're looking forward to the work. We're hopeful that our contribution can add to the economic growth opportunity of the downtown which has suffered a lot this year. So I'm going to ask Tom Smith, who is the Chairman of our Parking Committee, and Joel Mann, who is the Lead Consultant for Stand Tech Consulting, to present the scope of study, go over the details of the contract we're going into, and entertain any questions that you all might have. So, thank you very much. Tom, would you take over, please?
Tom, it looks like you're muted. I'm not sure if you just heard Trent.
Did you hear me?
Yeah, now I can hear you. I apologize.
Okay, good. You're on, Tom. Thanks. Sorry. I thought it was me. I thought I was mute.
I thought I got zapped out, so I apologize, everyone. But as Trent said, thank you for taking the opportunity to meet with us, to go over where we are with this very important study, and you know, where we are today and how we plan to execute the study. So what I wanted to do this morning is describe our approach and how we went about finding Stand Tech to be our parking consultant. Then Joel, who's on the line, Joel Mann with Stand Tech, will describe their approach and how they're going to conduct the entire study. So the first step was developing a scope of work. And the prior DDA had actually considered conducting a parking study and had a proposal from a good firm named Carl Walker, who's now part of WCI. And in that proposal, there was a scope of work. So we had a running start, but the DDA at Trent's request formed a committee of three people, me, Dave White, and Michael Thompson. And together, we worked on an expanded and more thorough scope of work. And we had a stated goal in this scope, which I think might have been provided to you. But the stated goal would be to increase parking capacity and convenience near and around downtown Roswell to benefit local businesses, residents, and patrons. So the scope had four main pieces, and the first was a review of historical documents, relevant documents like the prior parking study and historic area downtown plan. There was a retail study, historic district master plan, just trying to put all this in perspective with what we might want to try to accomplish for parking in downtown Roswell. The scope had actually listed the Gateway Project, and in retrospect, that was a mistake because the Gateway Project northern boundary doesn't come north of 120. So that's really not relevant, and that was my fault, but that's really not going to be a part of the study and the parking scope. So the second piece would be demand analysis, including physical counts of occupied spaces on different days and times, and utilization of various parking lots. And also, obviously, do a supply analysis, including the three lots leased by the city and the lots operated by Twelve Oaks, their other LA services. Some restaurants like Ostervia, Table in Maine, and Bin 25 have their own onsite parking, and of course, the City Hall Lot. And another piece, a fourth piece of the scope, would be to have key stakeholder interviews, including restaurant owners, proprietors, people with the city. We plan to talk to Steve Stroud and Andy Williams, even though we've already talked to Steve a number of times. But we want to get a universe of people that have invested interest in downtown in one sort or another and get their perspective on the issues they face with parking. Once we got the scope ready, then we had to find firms to talk to. And to do that, we talked to prior DDA members, we talked to folks in the city, including Alice Wakefield, who was super helpful and gave us some great names. And we found seven firms who conduct parking studies as a part of their core business. And we conducted the three committee members on the DDA conducted Zoom meetings with each of the three, each of the seven firms. And we sent them the scope and got five proposals back. We felt very good about the five firms. They're all large multinational firms, deep capabilities, and again, conduct parking studies as part of their core business. And as part of this process, we developed an objective evaluation matrix and scored each firm based on things like experience, capacity, the quality of the proposal, their communication, and local knowledge. And obviously, we picked Stand Tech. And brief info about Stand Tech, they're a multinational firm, but they've long had a local presence. They have local offices in Alpharetta and downtown. And they also conducted the parking study for Alpharetta and another one for Norcross. So we felt comfortable with their local knowledge and experience conducting parking studies. And we liked their approach to conducting the study, which was basically looking at both supply-demand and factoring in transportation and mobility because their view is that parking is part of an overall mobility system, whether it's pedestrian or vehicular traffic. And Stand Tech had actually done a prior study for Roswell, studied Roswell's Intelligent Transportation System Master Plan. So they have experience working with the city. And we really felt comfortable with their management-first approach to understand what we have and whether or not that capacity can be better utilized to essentially augment parking capacity and build a flexible model that in the future, there are new developments that come online that we can factor that in and get a better understanding of how that might affect parking in the future. So with that lead-in, I'd like to hand it off to Joel.
Good morning, and thanks again for taking the time to talk with us and let us share our approach on the study. We're started with the study and in kind of a due diligence phase, but the real work of analysis and recommendations is yet to come. So it's great to have the opportunity to have conversations like this early with elected officials and other community leaders so that we're approaching the more technical tasks of the work with the right kind of feedback and direction. So thank you again. I'm going to share my screen and run through a very short presentation that lays out our approach. Tom touched on it somewhat, but I want to give you an example of the things that we look at and how the study, at least from what we can see right now, we expect to kind of take shape. And then we want to make sure that we're leaving enough time for questions and some discussion. So I'm trying to launch this full screen here. Just quickly, I want to give some context and background. Tom touched on most of that, so I can be very quick. But I want to talk mostly about our approach, which, as Tom mentioned, is kind of a management-first approach. So this is the team who's going to be working on it primarily. I'm here on the left. Mike Holt, who is my colleague in Atlanta, was actually involved in that ITS study that Tom mentioned. So he's a transportation engineer. I'm a transportation planner. Whitney is a colleague of mine, who's in the practice of which I am a leader. We call that our Urban Mobility Group. And that focuses a lot on downtown and, you know, city-centered kinds of transportation issues, which are often complex. It's not as easy as just traffic or just pedestrians or just bicycles. Those things are interrelated, and we tend to work in that kind of space where many things are happening at once. And parking is a great example of that because it does tie into many other things. And unfortunately, I don't have a cool black and white headshot for Josh in here. He's fairly new to our team, but he's going to be helping us with doing some on-the-ground data collection, which is actually starting tomorrow. And I'll talk more about what that is in a second. But we took a first pass at defining some goals for the study overall. From talking to Tom and other DDA members, we understand that the real challenge and what has the highest public profile in terms of parking challenges in downtown Roswell is focused on some very concentrated time periods, especially when restaurants and entertainment are busy. So this tends to be meal times, especially dinner later in the week, Saturdays. And that same level of demand on the parking system isn't present the entire time. So that points to a unique set of challenges and working conditions for us that we need to pay attention to. We want to address those, but we want to make sure the rest of the week and the rest of the parking system is also understood in context of how downtown works. We are focused with this on identifying policies, and that may be things like ordinance changes. It may just be things like the way that the city's departments work on a day-to-day basis to manage the parking system. But this is a policy-based approach to allow management to get the most out of the parking system and the parking inventory you have. I'll repeat this a few times through the presentation, but our philosophy with parking is that you often have more of it than you realize, or it could do more, you know, to serve demand and serve economic functions than communities realize. And there's a lot of value in unlocking that because you don't have to spend any money on it, or at least not, you know, significant amounts of money like you would have to on construction. So before getting to the point of building new parking, you want to make sure you're doing the best you can to understand what parking is there, what other uses it could offer, and how to structure those with kind of policy or standard operating procedures. And it's important to do that, not just because it saves you money, but because if you do keep growing, which is a good thing, right? It's a good problem to have if there's economic pressure bringing more to your downtown and needing more parking. If you do end up constructing more parking or development does, you want to make sure you've got a sound management framework for that. Or the challenges you face now are just going to get replicated on a bigger and bigger scale and get harder to deal with. So it's good to set that groundwork now. And we see some signs that you've been doing some of that already. So that's encouraging to us. We're approaching a community that's open-minded and smart about parking already with what you have. So we look forward to continuing, you know, to offer ideas to you. But the real objective of all of this, it's not turnover, it's not revenue with parking, it's availability, because that is what the customers need. And when they perceive that there's difficulty in getting parking, or it's not reliably available, that's where the, you know, the negative perceptions of downtown's parking begin to circulate, that it's just not there and I can't get it. That means we have a problem. That means we need more, or that means we need to do something about it. You know, our intent here is to create a system where you can ensure that there's availability for people who want to be able to use whatever parking they want. And we can talk a bit more when we get into discussion about other, you know, goals that you might have for this. But these right now are kind of our framework for getting started. And then, you know, in terms of where the study is going to be taking place in downtown, it's a very exciting time. If you can sort of excuse 2020 and what it's, you know, done to a lot of our communities, there's certainly been a lot of activity. And Roswell's downtown, Catton Street, has become such a popular regional destination for food and beverage especially, but just such a quality place, you know, a good place to spend time, that more people want to be here, and you've got development coming, which is good to have. The parking system today, you know, is similar to what you would find in communities like Roswell. There's never been, you know, big, major, you know, like downtown, midtown, Atlanta-scale development that's brought large parking supply. So this has been the parking that's supported the businesses that are there and the various activities and functions, a lot of which have evolved out of, you know, the historically residential patterns right around the business district. So you've got a mix of parking onsite, you know, parking lots that are dedicated, some street parking. It's several different facilities, each at a small scale. And that's, you know, that brings its own challenges because one single parking facility can't do the work of the entire downtown. You've got to figure out a way of partnership to use many different resources together. There's some variation in terms of how parking is regulated. Some of it's priced. A lot of it is priced actually relative to other downtowns in the Atlanta region. Norcross and Alpharetta, where we've done work before, they haven't gotten to this point yet where there's, you know, market tolerance for paying for parking. But there's a bit of maybe uncertainty in how that's used. The street parking is offered for free for the first couple of hours, but if you're parking in a lot where they're charging, you're paying for that from the beginning. And it's unclear if you get to a place you want to go and it doesn't have its own parking or there's nothing available. It may not always be clear to users not familiar with downtown what they do exactly and where they would go. So there's opportunity in that to streamline a system and make something that's a lot more, you know, unified and consolidated. But when we do studies like this, we don't just look at today. We also take account what's happening with downtown into the future. So part of that, our approach has typically been, we just, we consider what forthcoming development we think is going to happen, and we build that into our way of estimating parking demand so that we can figure out if the current level of demand works with the inventory, but also if a future level of demand is going to work with that inventory and, you know, help you prepare for actions that you may not need to take right away, but at some point in the future. Of course, this year has brought, you know, a new perspective to our thinking on this that we have to be prepared for these unforeseen impacts that can greatly disrupt typical patterns and economic activity. So we are still kind of figuring out how that works best, how to, you know, model for COVID and pandemics, if you will. But that's something that we're considering in this work and other parking work that we're doing is what happens when there are shocks to the system? And how do you then, you know, deal with public health implications, deal with management revenue and that sort of thing when things are changed so greatly? And then, you know, our approach to how we do the work is basically management-first. Like we've said, we're going to be looking at existing inventory and figuring out what options you might have to utilize that better, to serve, you know, the various kinds of demand you have, and recommending what you would need to do to make those options available if they're not today. If there's something holding downtown back from better utilizing this parking, we need to help you identify what it is and give some strategies to the DDA and the city for how to move forward with those. We are doing some detailed assessment work, which includes working with the city's GIS inventory, which is really good, I'll say. The city's done a great job of keeping track of assets like this, and you are, you have a very well-managed GIS inventory. But we're complementing this with some field inventory that not only confirms what is there, what existing supply you have, but we're also looking at utilization with that. And part of it is making sure that the various different owners of parking, managers of parking, and contributors to the dynamics of parking demand are considered in this as well. But the main part of the analysis work that we do that brings us to recommendations is based on understanding the actual supply and then the true demand for parking, but comparing that to how parking is currently being used. So the graphics that are shown in this slide help explain that somewhat. The one on the left with these solid bars moving across, got these little icons in there for different land uses, office, you know, retail, restaurant, food and beverage, and residential. Zoning ordinances, development regulations typically require when a developer's building something, they've got to provide a certain amount of parking, right? And that came about, that practice has been going on for basically a century now, since the first zoning ordinances. But that came about to help protect neighborhoods from spillover parking. You didn't want, you know, people coming to a place where there was insufficient parking, and they figure out where they need to go, and it causes impacts on communities that aren't benefiting from that. Zoning was set up to help take care of it by requiring development to provide its own parking. So if you do that, and you think of that parking as serving nothing but that, you know, those particular land uses, you end up with this sum total that's represented by the dash line up here at the top. And, you know, that would be your parking. But that's not how parking actually gets used. You know, the real dynamics of parking are that the use ebbs and flows throughout the day based on particular land uses. So office, you know, it's busiest during the day, during the business hours of the day when people are at work. And then the use of that office parking trails off at night. So you've built this much parking, but for certain hours of the day, and here in the evening, you're not using it at all. Same thing with retail, same thing with restaurants, which tends, that tends to peak around meal times. And the same thing with residential, people are mostly there, you know, overnight when they're at home. And when you look at those dynamics kind of shifting throughout the day, you don't actually use all of the parking, the sum total of parking that you were required to build, you use less. And we often find that the gap is pretty significant. You know, it's sometimes more than the 20% shown on this kind of stylized graphic. But the idea behind this is that you build parking to suit particular uses. A lot of it goes unused at different times of the day, and the true demand is actually something quite different from what we're asking for because we're asking for parking on the basis of individual land uses. And the key thing about that is that, you know, there's opportunity here. 20%, you know, off from the required parking is parking we could be using at any given time to support something else. And during the really acute peaks, like where, you know, restaurants have everybody coming in, you know, there's probably something like office parking or church have everybody coming in, you know, there's probably something like office parking or churches or other things that that could be used. That that's easy enough to understand and explain, right? The the hard part is getting to it and developing the actual steps you would take to make that happen. So that's what we're here to help with. And that's the crux of the study. We we go out and actually count how many people are there using the spaces and compare it to this true demand number to figure out if we're, you know, in need of doing something more than that. Or if we, you know, if we have parking like we anticipate we would, then it's just a question of of figuring out how to better utilize the total inventory. So what comes next for us? We're working on a fairly fast schedule with this. And we're we're, you know, kind of approaching the second third of it, if you will, week three and week four. We are working with the DDA to identify stakeholders that we'll speak to. So this is going to be some of the city staff who are involved in parking management, especially from the DOT. But this is also business owners, you know, restaurant owners. We would like to get a diverse set of perspectives on this to understand kind of where everyone's coming from. And it's helpful because that's the opportunity to start building advocates, you know, beyond just our elected officials. When people understand that, you know, we we have some strategies that they like and they buy into. They're going to come and support this and they're going to be the ones helping to educate users and, you know, share information on how it works. So we aren't always guaranteed to get that support from day one. But if we start the conversations early and understand the perspectives, we feel like we've got a much better path to building it by the time the study is finished. So that we do have those kind of natural champions coming out of the process. That's going to make your jobs easier, the DDA's jobs easier and in bringing this forward to people. Because it's got organic buy-in down at the actual kind of user level. Like I said, our our data collection efforts, we've gotten started with getting some of the GIS from the city, but we're going to be doing field inventory this, the end of this week, basically. So starting tomorrow. And doing some counting on Saturday as well. So we've we've worked with the DDA to figure out the right times for that. We are going to need to do some kind of archaeology work, if you will. Just to confirm that we're we're not completely off from normal conditions from from the pandemic. So surveying aerial photography, getting data from the city's parking department as well as Twelve Oaks, who's a major, you know, private operator and they do valet services and management. Just to make sure that if the counts we have now are low because of the pandemic and reduced activity, that we can kind of hand adjust those appropriately to say this is what it would have been in typical years. And and build our recommendations off of that. So that's a that's a quick run through of what we're going to be doing with the study. I'd certainly love to get questions from you and guidance on on how you think this can best serve the city. And we're we're looking forward to continuing with it. Anyone who would like to speak, it looks like Councilmember Palermo has his hand raised.
Yeah, Joel, I really appreciate the presentation.
Hold on a second, please. Thanks, Joel. Councilmember Hall.
I would, I had my, I had my hand up before Councilmember Hall.
Councilmember Hall.
It it's okay with me, but I'll I'll just throw my questions out there. Thank you, Joel. On the GIS slide, I I had a question on that as to how there was something called Born. I I didn't understand that slide completely. If you could go back to that and just hear how that'll be used. And my other question, I'll just put both of them out there and then mute myself. Is the stakeholders, will you be reaching out to residents that are or or trying to reach out to residents that would be potential users of parking and visitors? Will you be able to capture that group at all?
So I'll start with your first question on GIS. Do you see the slide back up?
Yes.
So this is in Massachusetts, actually. Several of my colleagues are in Stantex Boston office, and that's kind of the the home of our practice group within the firm. I just, I live here and most of my career has been in Atlanta, so I I work here. But this is an example of a similar study, you know, similarly sized downtown, sort of on Cape Cod, heading out of Boston. And, you know, this is an example of just how we, you can map inventory. You can, you know, color code and show different classifications, but if you dig into this data under the hood, this is going to have information on every lot and every on-street, you know, cluster of spaces on how many accessible spaces for for the disabled are there? If parking is public, if it's private, any spec- special regulations on it. And it's a very powerful tool to have because you can start analyzing based on distances, you know, within you know, a five-minute walk of this location, how many public spaces could I get to? And then we can roll the utilization information into that as well and say, how many of those were being used at different times? So I know how much is potentially on the table to support something else. So we use GIS because of that, because it's it's good to understand a downtown's parking system in the aggregate like this. But most people don't really think of it that way, you know, especially when you're talking about development and a particular use and supporting that. So you want to have that ability to analyze on a spatial basis, which is why we spend the time at the beginning building this up. We end up doing a lot more work, you know, on site level and and sort of small area kinds of questions than we do on the bigger overall system. And then the second question about stakeholders, we've discussed with the DDA committee leading the study who some of our stakeholders are. I think that's a great suggestion on visitors especially, and I I I can let Tom and Trent speak to it a little bit more if they want, but I think a good starting point with that might be that when we're talking to businesses, we let them know we'd like to hear the visitor perspective as well and, you know, get their input on how to access those channels and and, you know, figure out how to reach out to people. And and the same thing with residents as well. There is residential kind of write-up against the Canton Street area of downtown where we're doing the study. And it would be, it would be good to understand, you know, generally what the perspective has been, you know. Have you observed spillover into this area? Do you, you know, like living here because you can walk and not have to park, or do you need to try to go over and park downtown? Those are all good questions to have answered as well. Even if we're not studying the residential explicitly, it's good to know how that interfaces with downtown.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Palermo.
Joel, so really appreciate the presentation and the the experience and expertise you're bringing. And so a question I have is, I'm definitely happy that you're doing, you know, just meeting with a lot of stakeholders and definitely like Councilmember Hall's suggestion of increasing stakeholders. In your experience, when your firm's done this other times, do you run into situations where you meet with stakeholders? And they don't necessarily have the same full view that you have and experience where they have a preconceived notion, where they have kind of just, you know, their focus on what they feel the solution is?
Almost always, almost every time.
Okay. And then how how do you handle that for kind of just raising awareness, both with that individual stakeholder as well as the whole community?
You know, it it'll add to that, it's not every stakeholder who disagrees or has their own sort of this is what we need to do, kind of commitment going in. But there's always at least one and and usually more than one. And we make it very clear to them when we start talking to them that they're not necessarily wrong. We don't know yet. We need to better study it. I think the important thing to do when, I'll just, I'll put out a hypothetical example. A downtown that might be looking to make better use of its existing parking might have some stakeholders who are convinced that a parking garage is what you need to do. You you've got to build more parking. That happens in many communities that Alpharetta had actually already committed to building a parking garage and their council approved a budget for it. Norcross had not, but they had several stakeholders who were kind of pressuring them to do that. And I think the important thing to do with that is to help people understand that there's a cost, there are trade-offs to anything that we're going to be doing. And that, you know, their concerns and saying we need more parking for this. You know, they're they're not wrong. We just need to help them understand a way to get there before it might be feasible to do something like what they want to do. And I think that, you know, the the cost thing really does start to make sense when you build a more sort of expansive and nuanced business case out of things that that would would take on major public costs. So parking garages or a major investment in new capital, you know, like adding in cameras and sensors and things like that. Might be good ways to go, but they're going to come at a cost and you need to bring people along to help them understand. You know, this is what it's going to mean for downtown to do that. These are the decisions the city or some other, you know, partner would have to make to do it. Is there something that we can find that can help you get to that point until you're ready for that? Are there ways that we, you know, you might reach the point where you need to do that? But until that, are there ways that we can sort of bridge the gap for you and get you halfway there? We don't always win them over that way, but we find that if we're listening and telling them your concern is not unfounded at all. You just might not be at that point yet where it's absolutely critical. So, you know, what can we do to help you in the interim period? Tends to build more support than, you know, what we started out with.
Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, Gary. So in no way do I want to delay this in any way, shape or form. So I think it's very important we get on this. My my question is, though, with in the COVID era right now and post-COVID, pre-COVID, post-COVID. In your experience, have you seen a difference in pre-COVID counts to COVID counts to, you know, potentially post-COVID counts? Are we doing this too early? During a time when we might not be at full capacity? And, you know, if so, I mean, I, we all wish we had a crystal ball to figure out when this is going to end, but we don't. So just wanted to make sure we're we're not doing a a study here that would be out of date come next summer, if God willing, we have a vaccine.
That's a great question. I guess the short answer is y- yes and no. We're seeing major disruptions. It depends on what your downtown has, right? So we're seeing major disruptions when we're trying to lead studies like this in downtowns that are very heavily office-focused. Of course, you know, they're they're telling everyone to work from home, so you just don't see as many people there. The Ross, the, we're not looking at a a large, large study area. It's pretty focused on Canton Street from from basically Magnolia up to Woodstock. So a a pretty tight definition, and that is largely restaurants and retail. We have, we have the city hall and it's it's related parking behind the building included in our in our study area, but the real questions that I think begat this study have to do with the restaurants on Canton Street and, you know, associated uses there. And from talking with the DDA members, it sounds like, you know, sales tax receipts are only off by about ten percent of where they were last year. That gives us pretty reasonable confidence that we could work with these numbers and build in some adjustment factors around them to say, look, if this were increased by another ten percent or so and this were representative of kind of typical conditions, you you'd be able to call this normal. I think in any circumstance, though, doing a study right now requires us to take some different thinking and how we build all of our analysis tools. So we do those those graphs that I showed you with the, you know, parking demand layered over times of the day. We build, you know, spreadsheet model-based tools to to calculate that and come up with where, you know, there are peak periods of parking happening and, you know, what you do relative to the supply. And we fully intend to provide those to the city so that you can use those moving forward to help manage and, you know, answer these questions in the future. So one, we can adjust them now to kind of account for realistic, you know, true economic performance. And two, you know, it's just a matter of doing a quick count of utilization, updating those a couple of years from now, once we're done, just to kind of you know, ground truth it a bit, once the pandemic is hopefully over and we're we're, you know, back to economic performance. I think in the case of downtown Roswell, the heavy use of, you know, restaurants and and retail gives us more confidence than we would have in, say, downtown Atlanta or Buckhead or somewhere like that, that's so office-heavy and parking rates are way down.
Councilmember Willing.
Yes, thank you. And and thank you for a great presentation and giving us a chance to ask some questions and see what you have planned. Just a couple of comments and and a question. Also related to COVID and dealing with its future projections, are you also able to look a little further into the future as to the impact on rideshare and and services like that?
Yeah, that's something that we can, that we can consider with it. Again, we don't have a, we don't have a crystal ball either on things like that to know exactly what will happen, but you can build in that dynamic into the estimating methodology. And, you know, we like to, we don't just work in a, you know, in a hidden location and then bring you something and say, here it is, this is it. We were pretty transparent about our methodology, so we like to show you all the work and show you the steps and point out, okay, so we assumed that when pandemic ends, rideshare will come back and there will be, I I assume you're referring to Uber and Lyft, that kind of, you know, TNC's, transportation network companies, we call them. Yeah, we can build in something to say, those will continue to chip away at two percent a year as they get more popular or, you know, maybe those companies are forced to reckon with the true cost of their service and they have to start charging much higher rates. And people decide they're just going to go back to driving because they're saving money. We can, we can factor that in. A big unknown that I think is a lot less immediate for us, but certainly something that's getting a lot of discussion in the transportation world is self-driving vehicles. So our firm has actually done, you know, as much research, if not more research than any of the other big engineering firms around this. Stantec has actually operated a couple of the test tracks for self-driving vehicles in California. So we've gotten to learn a lot about where the vendors are, where the industry is. And can kind of factor that into it, too. If people no longer need to drive themselves and park somewhere, but they're getting a car that can drop them off and then go somewhere else, you know, that's going to cut into parking demand as well. So we try to build things like that in to a model so that we can say, if this increases more than we think, let's turn up the dial. It's going to mean you're only getting this level of use, which might, you know, allow you to forego some of these management strategies or, you know, building more inventory in the future.
Right, okay, great. My second to another question and then another comment, but so the graphs that you showed with the required parking and observed parking by zoning. Are those, I guess, two slides down, are those actual for Roswell or is that just an example of what you have for other cities? But that's something that you would be producing for us.
Correct, yeah. This is, this is a core part of how we make the case for our recommendations is showing all this together. That if you've got an actual number of spaces that zoning would require, and then you look at how that's actually being used, the the how that's actually being used is an estimated demand figure. And that comes from, so the Urban Land Institute and the Institute for Transportation Engineers both have their own kind of extensive background of research, but also methodologies for how to forecast parking demand based on land uses. And we we have kind of custom-built our methodology out of both of theirs. So that basically you've got a a calculator. You can plug in what your square footage is or your number of units or hotel rooms for every use and then produce graphs that look like this. So we'll not only be doing that, we'll actually go compare that to how many people, how many cars are parked in spaces, you know, in real time to see, you know, are the estimates high or are the estimates low? Because the outcome, those two outcomes would would send you in different directions for what recommendations to offer for management. And these are, you're you're right, these are not for Roswell. These are just, these are really not for anywhere. These are just stylized, you know, here to look cool.
I think those will be very interesting to see. And I also just wanted to emphasize, I think, as far as when you're talking to stakeholders, I've been talking to visitors who are in downtown, residents as well as people who are coming from outside, what their actual experience is at different times of the day, you know, where they what their actual experience is at different times of the day, um, you know, where they were able to find parking, what some of their favorite places are to park, what the obstacles are, but I think that would be very insightful for us as, as part of the survey.
Yeah, we, I'll, I'll talk with the DDA about it. We um, we haven't set up a formal survey as part of this outreach process. It was really focused on, you know, the stakeholders. But, you know, here we are now, all in our living rooms or dining rooms or wherever we're working. And I think people have just kind of gotten used to this to the point that pushing out an online survey, you know, it's, it's one more quick little thing they can do. That's not that hard to set up and we might decide just to go ahead and do that. Uh, because it could be a lot easier for the business stakeholders that we talked to, to kind of black that out to their customers and then get a lot more feedback than we might be able to get from, you know, setting up meetings and talking to people.
Well, I think actually talking to people while they're there and finding out what their experience was at any particular time might, might be really helpful as, and as well as an online survey. Um, I just don't want the perception that parking is difficult, um, when it's not to, to be an obstacle for the downtown.
Right.
Hey Marie, this is Tom. If I can add a, a thought on that. Um, the original um, scope was really leaning more towards a quantitative analysis and we wanted to see where the data takes us.
Sure.
And do a very thorough supply, demand and, and the peak demands and is there a better way not only to utilize existing inventory better, but also are there ways that we can inform or educate the public better? So uh, it, it's a, a more convenient, easier experience for them. And, and so the um, visitor interviews or surveys wasn't actually part of the original scope, but I get your point. And um, I think others have made this point as well. So let us talk with Joel and see if there's a way that uh, you know, in a, in a time efficient way, we can somehow figure out a way to, to push that out.
Right, okay, great. Thank you all. Look forward to seeing the results.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Tom, Joel, Trent, did you get everything you needed?
I think so. This has been really helpful. Again, it's, we, we like to have these introductions. Um, you know, as we're getting started, just to make sure you're aware of what we're doing with this and what we're going to be bringing to you. So thank you for the feedback and, and the insight. Um, and we'll look forward to sharing this with you when it's all done.
One, one thought I would add to, um, we don't pretend that we have the exact perfect list of stakeholder interviews of uh, restaurant owners, proprietors, um, other users, key people in the city and so on. So if, if um, anyone has suggestions on uh, you know, for example, we, we definitely want to talk to, say, Ryan Pernice. I know he's strongly opinionated on um, on the solution to parking. But if there are others, regardless of their point of view, that you feel it's important that we should include in the stakeholder interviews, we're very receptive to that.
And Tom, I, I appreciate that offer because I, I definitely want to make sure you, you're pulling in a lot of people, not, not only the people that have that strong, you know, uh, specific opinion ahead of time, but really a lot of the different business owners affected that, that maybe aren't as always vocal.
And Tom, one thing you might add is a projected time of completion, generally speaking?
Uh, we're looking um, probably mid to late January would be our, our estimated time at this point.
All right, thanks, Jen.
You've taken the time to be with us today.
Thank you, thank you for.
Happy to, uh, look forward to sharing uh, as we get further down the road.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three and our other items, discussion regarding the city of Roswell's right-of-way policy. Councilmembers Hall, Palermo, and Zapata. Councilmember Palermo.
So uh, appreciate this continuation. So uh, as, as you remember, we, we brought this to a previous uh, transportation committee meeting, just really wanting to discuss the opportunities to allow uh, structures to potentially go in, in the right of way. Um, I, I did, I did get a chance to review uh, Mr. Hulsey's draft, which I appreciate, so. And Mr. Hulsey, I appreciate that, that you, uh, you had said you'd finished that draft about two weeks ago and wanted RDOT to review. I, I would have probably preferred this whole committee have a little more time than just once the packet was uh, was produced to review it, but I, I do hope everybody had a chance to review and, and discuss. I think uh, I think it's a great starting point. I think it's something that, that does help us get to where, where I, I think we want to go, which is again, giving the opportunity for neighborhoods to potentially put something in if it's safe, if it's, if it's wanted by them, et cetera. And so some examples that came up were both Willow Springs and Brookfield. I, I noticed within this draft, it mentions uh, staff's recommendation of having, of having a separate resolution to really cover uh, cameras and how that should work. And I, that sounds reasonable to me. I'm certainly open to what, what this committee thinks. The one, the one thing I'm also curious to discuss is currently it's purely based on an HOA being able to do it. And I want to raise the question, should we have some type of um, official support from, from, from a, a, a large percentage of the neighbors? You know, for example, um, when it comes to, I, I know, you know, the majority of this council took away the opportunity for uh, speed bumps, but prior to that, when speed bumps were allowed, it wasn't just an HOA requesting it, but it was also the fact that a majority of residents had to support it. So I, I encourage that we perhaps consider something along those lines. But uh, but again, just really want to discuss and hear what people's thoughts are. Um, one, with really the high level of just, should the city allow something like this? And, and if so, how do we ensure that it's safe and it's done right, supporting our, our residents? And number two, do we feel this draft is, is the right draft or, or do you have, do you have aspects you recommend we, we change in order to support something like this?
Floor's open. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, y- yes, uh, I agree with what council member Palermo said as far as the questions on just limiting it to HOAs because there may be other organized groups that, that could potentially have such a request. Uh, and not all neighborhoods have HOAs. Uh, so I guess I'd like to talk about that a little bit, maybe find out from a legal perspective. I, I know that we're looking for um, protection from some liability and perhaps that was the thought of just, you know, permitting HOAs. A- a- and that's basically, that's basically my concern or my question.
The reason to restrict it to an HOA or uh, a charitable organization, um, if you start allowing individuals um, to, and then I, I structured this in such a way that it would include non-mandatory HOAs. You don't have to uh, be organized as a corporation or anything. It says that you just have to have a recognized organization. I know many of HOAs that are non-mandatory are organized in essence as partnerships. Uh, and you just have to provide uh, documentation that you exist and have existed. Or in the instance, uh, most developers, when they turn it over to an HOA, it's a mandatory situation. Uh, I'm not aware of any, they're like Brookfield, they allow their HOA to go from mandatory to non-mandatory because they chose not to renew uh, their, what they needed to do with the state to continue being uh, an HOA. There are a lot of HOAs that forego paying legal fees and they wind up uh, in that trap that the, the state has set by allowing uh, covenants and things to expire unless they are renewed properly. I, the general policy as set out in the charter and also in existing ordinance uh, is not to place things in the right of way. And what I heard from you all was that you wanted exceptions to that and I drew this to be as narrow as possible. You've got twin problems. The liability is one, I'm not so worried about that because the city has sovereign immunity. But uh, it is, it can be a nightmare if you allow willy-nilly placement of objects or structures in a right-of-way. Um, it has to be governed in a way that needs equal protection and uh, shows that the city is protecting its policy of keeping the rights of way clear and uh, used by utilities and whatever else by ordinance that the council uh, establishes. So that's the why it was drawn this way and why it's just HOAs and charitable organizations. I didn't limit it to 501(c)(3)'s because I'm not familiar with the charitable tax laws enough. I know there are other organizations such as churches and all that might not be recognized as a 501(c)(3), but some other uh, exemption by the IRS. But that's the reason for that and trying to make it easier for transportation in order to uh, administer and enforce this.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that explanation. Um, I, I just wonder if item six, instead of saying a charitable organization, could read a nonprofit organization? Because nonprofit would include charitable.
Sure, we can do that. I would prefer charitable or nonprofit.
Charitable or nonprofit.
Sure.
Councilor Judy.
So on this uh, I think there's some details i- we need to work through as, as been stated. Um, you know, I know some of, from speaking to folks that are in non-mandatory HOAs, sometimes the HOA doesn't represent maybe the majority or, they're not even the majority, 30, 30%, 40% of the uh, the neighborhood's feelings. Um, and especially in some of these older neighborhoods where there's a younger group that's involved. And um, sometimes the older folks don't feel the same as the younger group and vice versa, so um, allowing uh, a non-mandatory HOA without um, a majority of, or whatever that number is within a neighborhood brings up a worry of mine. Um, two, uh, I know the city has sovereign immunity, but I know we've been served personally in a case revol- uh, um, involving the right-of-way. Um, so does this open us, uh, us as council members up to um, larger personal liability when approving things in the uh, in the right-of-way should something occur um, badly? Thanks.
I, I don't think it's any greater. Um, it could be. Um, I think you have to be careful and that the equal protection part would be what would concern me the most and why I would restrict this. And, and your point about HO, non-mandatory HOAs, I know when we were discussing, when council was discussing the security camera issues several years back, there was a percentage requirement. And we can certainly put that in there and I think transportation would like that. Um, and that, that's up to council and is easily included. As part of the application, they, the HOA could show that they have signatures of, say, 65% or 75, I think initially. Uh, with the cameras in the past, it was 75 and then they talked about lowering it to 65, but I'd never heard anything below that. So that's completely up to y'all.
Councilor Willing.
Yes, thank you, Gary, and thank you for uh, putting this together, Bob. Um, question that I have, and this is just for discussion, is the approval process? Um, I know that it's written to come to council. Um, what is the thought process on having it come through council versus having some administrative process that um, where the parameters were set, that transportation would make that decision versus coming through council?
I think you can set it up so that uh, transportation would make the decision. Um, I think it would, you need to have an appeal provision that if whoever is applying is dissatisfied, they could appeal to council. That's certainly something that uh, can be easily changed. And, you know, that way they wouldn't routinely come to council. You could set the parameters so that transportation would have uh, the ability to grant anything that falls within the parameters already set by council.
Okay, yeah. I think I'd just like to talk through a couple of different scenarios um, and see what, what we might be looking at. Um, so to have a better idea of what things should come to council and what things should, should be kind of the matter of routine approval if they were brought forward.
Well, that would be completely up to council.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hulsey. So again, I, I really think it's a great draft and, and really a great start and conversation starter. So uh, for where I stand on it as one, I certainly would like to add a percentage, a uh, just to ensure there's a majority of residents that are also wanting it to avoid any potential controversy, disagreements with the official HOA, something like that. So that's, that's, that's one change that I would like to impact the entire uh, document. And then my other thought is regarding, I, I actually do like the way it's written that it comes to committee and then potentially coming to council because I, I, I just am concerned of the, the worst case scenarios that there are some controversial um, choices, you know, with split neighborhood, whatever it might be. And I want to make sure that those deciding are really fully accountable to the citizens. So that's, that's why I kind of like this current process. Uh, that being said, I think it wouldn't hurt to discuss possible scenarios because maybe there are some possible scenarios that uh, should just be able to go to staff and to be appealed one way or the other to council versus other ones that should definitely come to council. But um, if there ends up being any choices or any possibilities that go just to staff, I'd want to make sure it could be appealed either way, what, whether an HOA is denied and the opportunity to appeal to council, but vice versa, if one's approved, I, and, and there's a number of residents that, that didn't want that approved, I'd want that opportunity to appeal to council too, because ultimately I do feel this body is the body that needs to be fully accountable to, to all the residents.
Mary Mary.
I've got um, two comments right now. One of them has to do more with signage or um, even flowers or um, sprinkler systems in the right-of-way. And I know it, it's standard that you call before you dig, but I also want to be clear that just giving someone the opportunity to erect a sign in the right-of-way, number one, it needs to be breakaway. Number two, if they damage a water line, they're responsible for repairing it. Uh, and then of course, if they damage any kind of cable that would belong to the utilities, I don't know how utilities handle that. Um, but I don't want to be in a position where we are picking up the tab for someone not calling before they dig or uh, running into something they weren't anticipating. And then the other question I have has more, has to do with the cameras, the tag readers. And I know the one situ, the one situation we've got, it was told to me that the HOA would contract with um, a security camera company. Um, and my question is, it just, it's concerning to me that someone can, a, a security company can contract with an HOA, be paid by them and they're locating in our right-of-way. And we have, can, can we create some sort of a franchise fee? Is there a way for us to basically lease our right-of-way in that situation where money is being exchanged?
This does not cover cameras at all. It only covers the structure. This contemplates that there's going to be a completely separate policy
Okay.
about security cameras. And I anticipate that that policy would be much like a franchise agreement. Um, and if an HOA is sponsoring it or whatever, they would have to present. But it, the same thing like with the schools, uh, following the state law that allows the uh, cameras and the license readers and that sort of thing. That has to be in conjunction with the police and figuring out how we do all that. This is designed specifically not to address this right now. We, we got to cover that separately.
Right.
So this wouldn't be there at all. This is just the structure. So the HOA would come in, if they have such a thing, they would get the structure, they couldn't put up a camera until they went through this separate policy. Because this doesn't say you can put a camera, you can't contract with somebody to put anything on your structure.
But we're going to allow the structure to be, let's just say, a pole. We're going to allow them to put up poles throughout the neighborhood in our right-of-way. Um, and they might never get the oppor, never have the opportunity to actually put a camera on it. It seems a little to me like it's the carrot before the horse. Wouldn't we requ, in order for them to put a structure up, wouldn't we? in order for them to put a structure up, wouldn't we require that they have approval to put whatever it is they want on the structure?
Now, that's part of the, that's part of the application here. You have to see what you're doing with this. And if, if it's involving a security camera, right now, we're not allowing any security cameras.
Okay, so then we wouldn't allow the structure?
Yeah.
Okay.
We would say, if that's your purpose, you can't do it now.
Okay.
Can't do it till we get a policy.
Thank you.
And then your other question, the liability, paragraph nine of the policy takes care of that. The applicant and then defines the city for any and all claims from injury or death. That, that would cover anything to water lines, utility, anything that goes wrong in the, in that. They're, they would be responsible.
Thank you.
Councilor Spata.
Thank you. So is, can we add on, on point number fourteen, maintain a liability of the structure or object is the sole responsibility of the applicant, just to, to make clear the liability as well? Does it hurt to have it in there? Just maybe redundant, but you know, better more than less in terms of liability? Is a question for item number fourteen. And then the other thing is, I think that we should add, I agree that sometime HOA is not really representing the majority of the residents for, for several reasons. And so I think it's good to have a, you know, signature or approval of the majority of the residents, especially if the structure or the object is going to be in front of someone specific, private property. So I think that definitely have to be approved by this person particularly, and then the majority of the neighborhood, of the members of the HOA. So I think that I would like to include this on, on this draft. And so those, those are my, my two comments. And then, and camera, then we need to bring then as soon as possible a resolution to, to start looking into that, because that might be one of the uses that HOA wants to do. So I don't want to leave this outside of the discussion of this draft.
Councilor Judy.
To follow up on what the mayor said, I think that I agree with her about, you know, making sure that we're protected should somebody go dig in the right-of-way and cost, you know, potentially cost us money, which I, I hear you said we are. And my other thing was, is, you know, from speaking to the folks in Brookfield over the last couple of weeks regarding their request, I think that, you know, there are certain things such as flowers and, and beautification of something that doesn't need to come through the process of council. And I, I would support the, the, I guess if somebody was upset, they could appeal it to the council. But I, I think that we need to look at that, because, you know, we, we can't have everything in this city come through council. We're going to hit a dead stop. So, so we're going to beautify things and we got to trust our staff to give the, give the opportunity to do that under the guidelines we set in this agreement. So as we move forward, I think that's very important to include in this, because there's some things that, you know, we've got bigger fish to fry than, than putting flowers out in front of the sign at Brookfield, should it be beautification, et cetera. And it is taken care of in the proper manner.
Any further questions or discussion? I'll, I'll take another stab and include what's been suggested and put it on the next committee.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to transportation. Item number four, consideration of a unified development code text amendment to modify section eleven point four, point sixteen, point eight regarding applicability of sidewalks in forced repair situations. Mr. Del Ross.
Good morning, everyone. I'll be sharing my screen here. This discussion has been going on for about six months. I'm sure that as I get into some of these details, the mayor will know a couple of examples of where this has come up in the past. Councilmember Hall, this directly ties into a discussion we had with you over the summer regarding a property on Willow Springs. Every once in a while, council, this is not something that comes up very often. This is a situation that comes up maybe once a year, twice a year at most. Staff runs into a situation with an applicant where a request has come in to reconstruct something that was damaged by an outside event. Let's call it a fire, let's call it a storm, whatever the details are, the request comes into, let's, just for a hypothetical example, a request comes in to rebuild a home that was damaged by a tree falling. We have, over the years, worked through our legal department to, to the best of our ability, waive sidewalk construction when an application comes in to rebuild a structure that was damaged by those events that I talked to you about. When the application comes in to rebuild the, the, the structure that was damaged at the exact same square footage, we do have the ability to completely waive sidewalk and completely waive fee. But when a situation comes in where the applicant wants to enlarge the structure that, that was damaged by the event, that is when we are forced to look at sidewalk and fee. I'm going to review the current code with you. I'll highlight where our recommended changes are. This is a request for text amendment initiation. So based on the guidance we hear from you this morning, if this is a path you want to move forward with and clear up some of the confusion, both on staff's end and on the applicant's end, this is something I would bring forward for initiation for a text amendment to council that would then go through the similar process that you're familiar with, going to planning commission and going to first and second reading. So here is the current code, sections one, two, three, and four. Section one is where we're going to be talking about making the changes today. Section one says a building or site may be renovated or repaired without meeting the requirements of this section, provided there is no increase in gross floor area or improvements. And that is the section that staff, over the years, have been using with legal's help and interpretation, along with community development staff, to say that structures, whether they are residential or non-residential, as long as there is no increase in gross floor area, is completely waived from any kind of sidewalk requirement or any kind of fee requirement. Sections two, three, and four, you're familiar with. That goes into the, the, the cases of when sidewalk is required for a residential structure, for increase of more than a thousand in section two. We talk about accessory structures in section three, and we talk about non-residential structures in section four. Our proposed change, this is up for consideration, and we want to make sure that this is a, this is a path that you want us to go down. The red text you see on the screen is our proposed amendment and addition, additional text that we would like to add to section one of, of the applicability section of eleven, four, sixteen. So I'll read it real quickly. The red text is a simple addition. A, a building or site may be renovated or repaired without meeting the requirements of this section or reconstructed, provided the current owner experienced a natural disaster, provided there is no increase in gross floor or improved site area. We are recommending that we draw a distinction of whether the current owner or whether a past owner actually experienced that event. This is, again, up for discussion. If you want to go down a different path, let us know, but we feel that it's fair to allow a current owner to reconstruct. We feel that if that, the, if the owner that experienced the disaster then sold that to another party, the discussion would be, does that secondary owner entitled to the same waiver or not? We'll follow whichever path you want us to go down. This amendment does not, does not specifically call out whether this is applicable to residential or non-residential, like the sections two, three, and four. So based on the current wording, section one would be applied to a single-family home or any structure on commercial property the same way. And if that's something you would want us to treat differently, that's the type of guidance we would like to hear from you this morning. This item triggers no financial impact to the city, and if this council approves, we would bring forward for an amendment to council at a future meeting and start that process. That concludes my presentation, and we're open to questions.
Councilor Judy.
When you say natural disaster, do, have we defined that somewhere?
That's a question that I anticipated coming up. I, I am not a lawyer, and I'd like to hear what Mr. Halsey or if any council members or if any of you have potential recommendations on how we want to want to wordsmith that list. We could co, we could go a several, we could go a couple of different ways. We could define the list explicitly and say exactly what events would trigger this, and the danger of going that route is if we incur, we incur event that isn't on that list, it very, it very clearly says this would be applicable. I mean, we can, we've talked about the use of the act of God type of events. We've talked about what a natural disaster is and whether is a, is a fire a natural disaster or are we just talking about weather events? There are, there are a couple of different ways we could wordsmith that based on your guidance.
Well, I, I like a broad, as broad as possible, but you know, if, if a fire, if a house catches on fire because of an electrical fire in the basement or something, I don't think that would probably be under natural disaster. I'll, I'll defer to, to Mr. Halsey.
What we built into the code with the UDC and the city code is that if we do not define a term, it is defined by the dictionary, and therefore we can use the broadest possible one. And in practice, we use either Webster's Unadveraged or we use Black's Law Dictionary, whichever will give the citizen what the citizen needs.
If, if council would like us to go a little bit broader than a natural disaster, that's something I can work with the legal department and bring some revised language to council.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Gary. Yes, I, I think it is important to be broad, because if a fire starts in, regardless of why a fire starts, a place could burn down and now the homeowner is burdened with having to rebuild it. Now, I, I do have a couple of questions as far as why we're making a distinction with current owner versus, in, in the situation that you're familiar with, a parcel had burned down, those people chose not to stay in, in that property and moved on, sold their lot, and, and a new homeowner came in to, to build the property. What, what would the difference be if the other, the prior owner had the exception versus the new owner? I guess I'd like more clarity on that. And then also, if a property is destroyed, the dwelling has insurance. Does that insurance extend out to also covering the cost of a sidewalk if the city is requiring a sidewalk? If anybody knows the answer to that.
Oh, I'll, I'll address the second question first, and I can't answer that. I'm hoping Mr. Halsey will be able to help us through that. But the, the first question, and specifically regarding the property that we were looking at in Willow Springs over the summer council member hall, based on the way we've drafted this currently, the, a current owner that experiences the event would be completely waived from sidewalk and fee. And if a new owner then purchased that property, based on the way we've worded it, they would be eligible for fee because they qualify for an exemption based on a subdivision that was built without sidewalks, but they would not be completely waived from the sidewalk requirement. If council feels that we want to grant that waiver to the owner and the future purchaser, then we would need to talk with legal, talk with comdev, and bring a slightly reworded amendment to you at council.
Councilmember Hall, the insurance, most homeowners' insurance would not cover a sidewalk. I suppose you could ask for a specific rider, but most of it would not cover that, only contents and the structure would be covered. Councilor Spata.
Thank you. So just to clarify, a natural disaster is flood, wildfire, earthquake, and hurricane. Those are the four natural disasters considered by insurance companies. So that is the definition. I don't think that the fire in a basement or any part of the house is considered a natural disaster, just for clarification.
Mayor Henry.
I just drove past a lot yesterday that I knew the history on it. The house blew up, and of course, what remained of the house was demolished, and ten years later, it's still a vacant lot. So when, if I was to purchase that lot, that wouldn't be any different than anyone purchasing a vacant lot. So I should be held to the same standards that a developer should be held to, because it's a vacant lot now. So, and I don't think, I, I'm not sure in other situations how that's handled, but I think probably our building inspectors, if something happened to a house and the folks wanted to move on, it would be demolished and then you've got a vacant lot. So I, I agree that we, we should stick with the current owner, not a future owner.
Any other questions or comments from the council? You have everything you need, Ron?
Yes, this was, I believe this was a vote, so if there's a, a motion, we would bring this forward to council for initiation.
Councilor Spata.
Thank you. So yeah, I would like to modify here that I see fire, natural disaster, to put wildfire. Wildfire, hurricane, flood, and earthquake. Those are the four natural disasters considered for, by any insurance company. So no fire.
Councilor Spata. Councilor Plomo.
So I actu, I actually would prefer it's a broader definition than just that. So I would prefer if, you know, God forbid, there's an electrical fire or anything else, as long as it's, and with the mayor's point, with it being a current owner, I think that seems, seems pretty reasonable.
Councilor Hall.
I, I just have a clarifying question for Mr. Halsey. The word act of God, would the act of God cover a more broader group of items? Would?
I don't know that it would be any broader than, than natural disaster. I'm trying to think. I mean, I guess if, depends on a plague of locusts versus harling a lightning bolt. I mean, both of those are considered acts of God, so I don't know.
A lightning storm, house burns.
Councilor Judy.
Obviously, we can wordsmith this as we go, but I would like this to include fire proper, any fire, because you, we could say, we could say, uh, natural disaster and any fire to go with this, because I, I mean, like Councilman Plomo said, I would prefer to cover electrical fires or anything that, a fire's pretty devastating, unless we want to go down the road of catastrophic, catastrophic event, which we could look at further. But I, I would like to include any fire. We could include act of God or any fire, or sorry, natural disaster or any fire. That would be my preference.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Councilor Plomo.
As you guys, I don't have a comment. I have a motion when we're ready.
Go ahead.
Motion to move this forward to the next, the next mayor and council meeting, next regularly scheduled comdev mayor and council meeting, with the addition of including any fire. And I'll let staff do that wordsmithing on, on how that should be worded.
Thank you. Is motion on the floor or a second?
Thank you. Is motion on the floor or a second? Second, my councilor Judy, any further questions or comments from the council? All in favor, please raise your hands. It, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, discussion Magnolia Street sidewalk design concept. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, everyone. So I'll just go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so the item before you today is the Magnolia Street, uh, sidewalk design contract. We had a discussion on that one back in, uh, January of this year. And then COVID happened and we had the, the funding changes. So we didn't come back to you earlier. Uh, but anyways, just to refresh our memory, here is a map that shows, uh, the area. So on you, on the left, on the right side of the screen, up and down, you see Highway nine. Then the next traffic signal to the left of that is the Mimosa Boulevard along Magnolia Street and Pine Grove. And then to the left of the screen, you see Coleman Road, the traffic signal. So the red dotted line is the stretch of, uh, uh, sidewalk that we are talking about. Uh, we're thinking of eight feet sidewalk here. So all these white lines that you see on the screen, those are all existing, uh, sidewalks. Uh, so we have a pretty good network, uh, going up to Canton Street, uh, as the destination. But here's this, uh, missing gap, uh, where you see the red dotted line. And you know, of course, it's, it's missing because it's, it's, it's a tough one. So it's a 300 feet long, uh, gap. And, uh, so when this was discussed back in, um, January, uh, committee, a couple of concerns that we discussed, uh, you know, we're talking about which side of Pine Grove Road, the multi-use trail is going to locate in the future. So we, we did some, uh, research on that. So, uh, just driving, uh, you know, up and down the corridor. Uh, you know, we believe that it's going to be easier generally on the north side. There is definitely some tough spots, you know, as, as the one of the ones we are discussing today. And there are some others as well, but there is more on the, on the south side of Pine Grove Road along the, along the stretch. Uh, and then the north side was, uh, actually listed, uh, in the bicycle pedestrian master plan, uh, as the, as the more desirable, uh, side of street to put the, put the trail on. And then there is more homes and subdivisions generally on the north side. And that's where the destination, the Canton Street is. So it would be better to have the trail on the north side. Uh, so for this specific request, this specific stretch of 300 feet long trail here, there is a impact to the trees and it requires a retaining wall as we discussed the last time. And I have those details at a, a couple of slides later. So again, just to refresh our memory, the sidewalk gap is, uh, ranked number 15 on our sidewalk matrix. And, uh, the number one through 14 are picked up by other projects, either a Roswell DOT project, the state DOT project, or, uh, picked up by development, or there's future prospects of it to be picked up by a developer. Or some of them are just way too costly to concern, like way beyond, uh, our yearly budget for sidewalks. So this is basically next in line. And we have a couple of the ones that we are already working on. So again, the, we're talking about a 300 feet long sidewalk. And the way the, uh, the terrain is in the area, it's going to need about 250 feet long retaining wall. The max, the height at the max point of that retaining wall would be around 12 feet. So it's, it's a, it's, it's a pretty high, uh, uh, retaining wall. Uh, and then of course, you know, we do these retaining walls to, uh, you know, accommodate whatever structure we are building and minimize the impact to, you know, more trees and to more private properties. So that's the reason to have a, have a retaining wall there. But even with that, uh, we see that it's going to impact about 30 trees. And then, uh, we, we had the city arborist, uh, take a look at the area and they did not see any of the specimen trees there. And we were not including any lighting, any pedestrian lighting as part of the scope either. So looking towards Canton Street, here is the gap on your left, the red dotted line that shows you the gap. And then looking from the Canton Street towards, uh, west, uh, this is how it looks like. So, uh, and you know, talking about the retaining wall, these are just a couple of examples in the city. The one on the left, you see that's on Canton Street, just north of Woodstock Road. Uh, this is the, like the surface of the retaining wall, it could be treated differently. And then the other one to the right is on 120 Marrietta Highway, uh, before you get to, uh, Villal. So those are just a couple of examples of retaining walls. Uh, so, uh, you know, we can, we can, um, proceed with the design contract for this little stretch. Uh, that was the item before back in January and, and today. Uh, we have, uh, one of our on-call firms, we got a proposal for $57,300 for that. That would include the, all the design work and the utility coordination would take about three to six months to complete. The future, you know, if, if you go that route, uh, the construction, estimated construction is at about $375,000. And we have, you know, enough funding in the, in the sidewalk line item in the budget. So, uh, staff recommendation, you know, whatever, uh, direction we get from you today. So we can either move forward with the design and, you know, understanding the impacts, the retaining wall and the trees. Or we could, uh, you know, abandon the concept, uh, and just go to the next project on the sidewalk matrix. Uh, so either, either is okay with staff. And you know, when we say abandon the concept that, you know, that doesn't mean we're just going to not look at it ever again. When, whenever the city is ready to do a full corridor study along Pine Grove, uh, this stretch can definitely get looked at, uh, again sometime in the future. So we're just looking for, uh, your guidance today. And if you choose to move forward with the design, then it would come to a future city council meeting. And if not, then you know, we'll just, uh, start working down the matrix and go to the next project. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that one.
Councilor Plermo.
Thank you. Uh, so Mr. Ralph, definitely appreciate the, the presentation and the discussion. So I, I strongly believe we need sidewalks down Pine Grove. So, uh, you know, by just, by just kicking the can down the road, it's not going to get any easier 10 years from now. And frankly, I, I don't think our money should be going into corridor studies for sidewalks as much as they should just go straight to building sidewalks. So that's, that's how I feel from that standpoint. That being said, I, I still, uh, I still use the example of hardscrabble towards the target, which was the, the, uh, pedestrian master plan, the bike ped master plan, had the, uh, the eight foot sidewalk all on one side. And then basically staff came to us and showed that actually it was much easier and more cost effective on the other side. And this council unanimously supported staff's recommendation, switched to the other side. I know that's not an ideal. An ideal, I wish we had all the money to make it so they're all on the, on the same side. But staff, I think, has done an excellent job when there needs to be those eight foot crossings. So, um, you know, I think you've done an excellent job with that on hardscrabble and some other examples. And so I still go back to this one where, where although ideally I'd love to see it right there and going all down, all down Pine Grove, the cost being so high, the 12 foot retaining wall needing to cut down that many trees. I still feel we should still support the ped, uh, master plan. But I feel for that portion right there, right across the street, is a property that doesn't have the same challenges, is, is frankly ripe for, for redevelopment. And, uh, and, and because of that stoplight right there in the picture you showed, there's little crosswalk area. There's an area right there for when we have, when we hopefully eventually build that, um, that full multi-trail all the way down Pine Grove, that it'd be just a, it'd just be a very easy spot for putting the, um, putting that eight foot crossing right there. Because, um, if you look at it from, from that stoplight at Coleman up to Canton Street, there's the left, if you're going, uh, towards Canton Street on the left side, you have the nursing home, which also would be another tough place to be putting one in. Where right across the street, there is a parking lot, um, which makes that easier there as well. So again, I, I certainly, certainly support the ped master plan on, on having these, these multi-use trails. And my preference is always to have them completely on the same side. But you know, given all the challenges you just mentioned, in addition to the cost, I just feel this is one of the examples where we should, where we should have the smaller sidewalk right there, save money and then have the bigger one across the street.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mohammed, um, for putting that together. I've got, I've got a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um, my first, and, and I'll just ask them all together and then mute myself and you can talk. Um, my first comment is $57,000 for a design of 300 feet of sidewalk. I, I, and, and, I mean, that's 15% of the cost, maybe that's what standard. It just seems rather excessive to design a retaining wall for six, you know, for 60 grand. Um, my other, my other comment is there's already sidewalk on the other side of this street. And regardless of, um, I, I appreciate what council member Palermo is saying. And however the outcome is on which side the multi-use trail is, there are sections of Pine Grove Road, perhaps they don't rank at number 15 or be, uh, they're below 15. But to me, it would make more sense to put sidewalk in that sector of road where one doesn't exist on either side, instead of putting sidewalk in, spending 375,000 on sidewalk when there's a sidewalk on the other side, just because it ranks a little bit higher. I mean, if the objective is to try and extend that corridor, um, take that money. I think if you did a poll of the residents in that area, uh, they'd give up this 300 feet of sidewalk to get sidewalk just a little bit west of there where one doesn't exist on either side of the road. Um, and, and my third point is, I know that you're coming out with a new, uh, sidewalk matrix and a new scoring mechanism, whether this, whether this section of sidewalk would score, uh, as high on, on the new one as it does now. So those are my comments and observations.
Councilor Plermo.
Excellent. Yeah, I have two comments to make. So, so first off, I just want to make sure it's clear. I think it was. But I am not suggesting that, that currently we, we find the money to put an eight foot sidewalk across the street. What I'm saying is we, we identify that across the street would be the location if, if or when in the future, an eight foot sidewalk is to be put in. And we put a smaller sidewalk right, right, um, right, um, here. So that's, that's something I certainly support. I also actually agree with council member Hall's point. I think if we look at a lot of residents that would actually utilize this stretch, they probably would be preferring it is down a little further. And that makes me think that brings us back to the matrix discussion though. And makes me wonder is, is having a sidewalk only on one side of the street, is it not? Um, or I'm sorry, having a sidewalk on no side of the street compared to one side, is it not a big enough point differential? Because I think council member Hall brings up a, a good point there. So, so those are my different comments and, and clarifying item. Thank you.
So I, I can try and answer some of those questions. So, uh, yes, for the criteria, you know, so we have an approved criteria by the mayor and council and that matrix is an outcome of that approved criteria. And the one that exists as of today, uh, lists this one as the next project on the list. But, uh, and, and yes, the criteria does have a higher ranking for a street or a stretch of road that does not have a sidewalk on either side. So we're just following the matrix and absolutely we don't have to, you know, do every project that's listed on the matrix. If the council thinks that this is too impactful, we can skip this. And of course, you know, whenever the corridor study happens, you know, this area could get looked at, uh, one more time. So yes, and there is a sidewalk, a regular five foot sidewalk that exists on the south side of the street. So there is pedestrian connectivity here for anyone who lives on the north side of Pine Grove, uh, further west of this area. They have the opportunity to walk down on the north side up to the Coleman Drive traffic signal, safely cross at a signalized crossing, walk along the south side of Magnolia and then cross again at the Mimosa Boulevard traffic signal. So they have this option, which is good. So this is not, this is not as critical. But again, like I said, based on the criteria approved by the council as of today, this is the next project in line. And, uh, yeah, if, if you, if the suggestion was to construct not an eight feet, but just a five foot on this stretch, which is on the north side, it would still require, you know, a retaining wall and still impact some trees. So not as high retaining wall, not as long and not as many trees, but there would definitely still be some impact. The last point I had was the design fee. So yeah, this is, uh, you know, this is still a little bit high on the higher side, uh, you know, more than the average. But please understand, we have this massive retaining wall. So we reviewing of the design fee, we believe that it is a reasonable fee that we got, uh, fee proposal that we got from one of our consultants. It's a, it's, it's a big retaining wall, big long retaining wall. So it takes that much work to, uh, design it. Uh, I hope I answered all the questions.
Councilor Halsey.
Yes, um, thank you, Gary, and, and thank you for putting this together and everyone for going through all the pros and cons on this location. I think it, um, yeah, I definitely a need, but also a lot of challenges. I was just curious regarding this particular site, um, besides the bike ped master plan, what sort of public input has been received or if there is an opportunity to, uh, to get some, you know, input from the public on this particular, on the, now that we understand the pros and cons here, what path forward there might be?
So as part of the bike ped master plan, uh, you know, there was a lot of public input that got done. And remember, remember we got, we won an award for that. So
Right, sure.
That sounds something. So that, that's how it was included in the bike ped master plan. And we didn't necessarily hear any specific, uh, you know, comments on this one. Uh, but those were, you know, mostly just general comments about the plan overall. Uh, so, and, uh, I guess, uh, as while this is going through the process, if it, if it goes to the council, you know, if we had any public comment, we, we didn't hear anything. But at the same time, we didn't necessarily reach out to anybody. But I can tell you one thing that we get a lot of requests for this little piece here. There is other sections of Pine Grove where we get requests as well. A lot of people want to walk to Canton Street. This is the closest to Canton Street gap that exists as of today. And we do hear a lot of requests for this one. But obviously when the general public is requesting, they don't necessarily understand the impact.
Right. I, I just, just think having some input based on what the reality of, uh, of what the project would look like would be, would be helpful in helping us make that decision.
So yeah, I, I guess the information we have today is, you know, is a dotted line and the impacts, the retaining wall and the trees. To go beyond that, you know, like having a concept, uh, you know, that's the next step in line, which is the design work basically. Uh, so we know, you know, the details I have shared as of today. And if there is, you know, any desire for us to reach out to the public, like the area neighborhoods, we, we can definitely do that.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you. It, eh, I, I understand that we have a matrix and the reason we have a matrix, but we're also here to, to, uh, just like you make decisions on if something is high on the matrix, but there's a pending development that's going to go in or some criteria like that. You, you move, you move down, um, to another project or, or you look at a different area. And if the object is to con, the connectivity, in, in my mind, I think we need to look at it that where is there no sidewalk on, you know, that is adjacent to that? What is the next section immediately to the, to the west of that? That would create that more continuous connectivity where these funds could be more effectively used, um, so that people can walk to Canton Street.
So I guess the way we operate is, so we have an approved matrix. If we're not moving forward with this project, we are moving to the next project listed on the matrix. And it may or may not be on Pine Grove Road. So we follow the matrix that is approved by the mayor and council.
Councilor Plermo.
Thank you. And, uh, Councilor Hall actually brought up just an, a Thank you, and uh Councilor Hall actually brought up a just an another another reason behind my thought process. That that if if on this side of the road, we decide if for just up to that stoplight, it's it's the five feet. Then we have a much smaller and cheaper um retaining wall. We we still have to cut down some trees, but we cut down fewer trees and and really save just just a lot of money right there. And right across the street, there has been uh development interest. And it's certainly much easier when a when a developer is planning on developing their, they have their equipment, et cetera. To be to be building the uh the sidewalks, which is why, as Councilmember Hall within our matrix already. We know if there's a certain spot that that does have some redevelopment interests, then then that's not necessarily, that one might be. The uh, you know, skip to the next one. I think this is just another advantage of if we were to move it across the street, we save hundreds of thousands of dollars. We get to have some leftover money to then move, you know, further down the uh the ma- the matrix and and that list of priorities. While still getting to to help fill in this little uh this little gap across the street.
Thank you. So a couple of things here. You know, first, we discuss not too far away about the criteria. And we identified that schools and parks, they were giving less points than commercial destination, in terms of destination. So that is my first point, you know, I would like to see back again the criteria and see, you know, discuss with this mayor and council. To give it more points uh in term of the matrix for the schools and parks, you know, this is point number one. So we're still analyzing the the matrix and the priorities based on schools and parks receiving less points. Than a commercial destination, for example. So that is my first one. My second point is, um you know, if we expand a little bit, a little bit big bigger picture. What is coming in term of projects after this one for four hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred? Because this project is calculated to be four hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred. And take around three to six months for completion. Uh so I would like to know what is below this, uh that does have nothing, that have no options for connectivity and and walkability. Because like our um director of transportation just mentioned, there is a way to cross the street and then walk and cross the street again. With uh in a safe way with traffic lights. So i- there is traffic lights and it's it's a safe way to cross the street and still get to Canton Street by uh walking. So my question is, what would be for four hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred? The next project who does not have any options to walk to and from the destination point?
So uh on the matrix, yes, that matrix is a is a conversation that we started about three months ago. It's been discussed at committee meetings twice, and it is due to come back to committee soon in the next uh couple of months. So that's still work in progress, you know, we are still receiving your guidance, and based on that, we're modifying the criteria. And the criteria uh, you know, defines the matrix. Uh and uh so the next thing I'd say, so we looked at the couple of uh, you know, next projects online. So we are already working on uh a little missing piece on Woodstock Road. That's where that Young Life Academy is, that's a missing piece, uh we're very important, again, very close to Canton Street. That's being worked on. The hardscrabble gap that Councilmember Palermo mentioned from uh King Road, Roswell High School, all the way to Target. There is an info item for you in the packet today on that. And a couple of next ones would be, there is a missing piece on Old Alabama Road. Uh that actually uh fills in a little gap uh to the Big Creek Park. So that's a big, that that's a good one, actually, that that, you know, fills a missing piece in uh approaching the Big Creek Park. And then there's a few gaps on Nazwid Ferry Roads. We have a lot of proj- it's it's not that we have like two project needs and we are just discussing one or the other. We have a hundred and fifty projects. If this one doesn't sound very desirable, we have a lot of choices to make, so we can continue down the list. We just have to see, you know, the limited money we have, it's even less in this COVID year. So we'll just go down the list, see wherever the available amount of money can get us a full project. And if you remember, this been mentioned before uh a few times is, uh a lot of projects where we could actually. Don't necessarily uh needed to do a full-fledged design, of course, which costs money. Uh we did just bare minimum design work in-house and just had a contractor build it. But those are generally the easier stretches, you know, generally flat, no retaining wall. Those are the things, we don't spend money on design, we just do the bare minimum design work in-house and have it constructed. We have uh, you know, we are running out of those easier stretches of roadways in the city. It's only the difficult ones uh and impactful ones and the costly ones that are we are getting into now. And we don't wanna go to project one hundred and twenty because it's easy to do, because it's too far down the priority matrix. So we wanna stay, you know, if we are at number fifteen now, maybe we can go down to number sixteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty-five. But we don't wanna go beyond that, because then, you know, the priority matrix would not be very effective. So uh, yeah, that's all I had.
Any further questions from the council? How many have everything you?
Uh yeah, I guess I'll just uh, what what I understood, I'll just state that and we'll go from there. So for now, we'll just leave this piece alone and go to the next project that's in line. It may or may not be on Pine Grove, and this little stretch will get looked at if and when the city conducts a corridor study. Because Pine Grove Road corridor is a very desirable corridor, has a lot of problems. We get a lot of requests, sooner or later, it is gonna need a corridor study to identify those problems and come up with the best solutions for the full corridor. And we'll see where that corridor study suggests to put a trail and where a sidewalk, on which side of the street.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, discussion of Big Creek Parkway Phase Two Concept, this item is being deferred at the January committee meeting. So move on to administration. Item number seven, consideration of a resolution to approve an amendment to the twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two consolidated plan. To include Block Room Three of Census Track one-one-four point zero five. As a geographic target area for CDBG Community Development Block Grant Funding. Mr. Hall.
Uh thanks, Gary. Uh thanks, Mayor and Council. So what we have here is, uh back in June, you guys had mentioned that you'd like to do more water lines with the CDBG program. Um in order to do that, uh we basically run out of water lines uh that we can do. Under the the old way of doing it, which was a um individual um beneficiary. So we need to designate an area, if if possible, for um us to do waterline projects with CDBG funds. I work with um Chris and and Dan and and Public Works, and they identified um. An uh area that is in a low moderate uh income area that we can qualify with HUD. And uh they have several waterline projects that they can uh do in that area. Um that's the uh one fourteen oh five census area, which is in the northern part of Grove Way. Uh so what we need here is to do a substantial amendment to our consolidated plan, which isn't as complicated as it sounds. But um if we uh basically, we designate that area as a low to moderate income target area. And then we can do um Public Works uh projects in that area with CDBG fund.
Thanks, Charles. Floor's open. Councilor Judy.
Motion to approve.
Thank God.
Motion approved by Councilor Judy, second by Councilor Zapata. Any questions or discussion? Councilor Tizer. All the all favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous, thank you. Item number eight, consideration of a resolution to reallocate program year twenty nineteen CDBG Community Development Block Grant Funds. For the Grove Plate Grove Place Water Line. Mr. Hall.
Thanks. Um so this is another situation where we need a substantial amendment. And the reason I grouped all these together is because we're gonna be doing a substantial amendment with our our COVID funds that we're hopefully gonna approve in in the next month or so. So um we can wrap it all together, and it kinda expedites things on HUD's end. Uh but this is another sub- substantial amendment to our consolidated plan. And basically, we have some unused uh two thousand nineteen CDBG funds. That come out to twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Um part of that is coming from um funds that were uh from a Recreation and Parks project. It got canceled due to COVID. Um and then the rest of it's coming from a, basically, one of our other public uh waterlines projects. The Clear Drive Waterline Project came in under budget, and we had some um a surplus there. So we'd like to reallocate uh those funds in the amount of twenty-two eight fifty-seven seventeen to the Grove Place Water Line. Which you guys approved for funding um with twenty twenty CDBG funds back in uh May. But they they do believe there's gonna be additional costs there, so we just want to reallocate those funds. And again, we we do that with a substantial amendment, um so reallocation of funds to the Grove Place Water Line.
Councilor Willsey.
Motion to approve.
Thank God.
Motion approved by Councilor Willsey, second by Councilmember Zapata. Any questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Charles. We are adjourned.
Thanks.